Yeah, I think the decision needs to be made on the phone ones that happened last week. Whether it was during the morning or after the evening.
At seven o'clock. Okay, everyone, at seven o'clock are the mics. Okay, thank you. I'd like to call the, call the meeting to order. Monday, May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two, Common Council Meeting. Clerk Jones, I believe you would like to make some comments regarding the link for the meeting and other, or just for the link for the meeting, please.
Yes. Good evening, members of the public. For audio quality, we will be muting everyone not speaking by default to maintain good audio quality for the council members as well as yourselves. If you would like to speak during the meeting on specific agenda items, please submit your request in the chat. Directions to do so are located in the chat. We ask that you provide your full name and address, as those are required for all speakers that are speaking at in-person meetings as well. If you would like to be called on during the meeting to provide public input again, please insert your name and your address in the chat, and you will be called on during the relevant time for public input. You will be given five minutes to speak during public input. For citizens that wish to speak during the privilege of the floor, please insert your name and your address into the chat again, and the council president will call on you, and you will be given three minutes to speak during the privilege of the floor. Please be sure to unmute yourself prior to giving your remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. A disrespectful, rude, or disruptive speech or actions will not be tolerated. Such speech and/or actions, as well as verbal attacks on any person, may result in the individual, without notice, forfeiting the remainder of his or her allotted time. At this time, we're going to go with our invocation, and that will be given by Pastor Kenneth Lee.
Thank you. Let's bow our heads. Dear gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity for us to come together to discuss the business of the city. We ask God that you would look over all of the elected officials and all of the people of this city. We ask God that you would continue to allow peace to be the focus of our city, and we just ask that. In the places where people are hurting, that you would send healing. We pray, God, that every action that we make will be something that helps to uplift our community, and to strengthen our community, and to make South Bend a wonderful place to live. Now, tonight, God, we just ask that you would help us to operate in unity, that you would help us to operate in peace, and that everything that we do will be for your glory. Amen.
Amen. And would you now please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Davis?
Henry here.
Councilmember Lee?
Present.
Councilmember Warner?
Present.
Councilmember Wax?
Present.
Councilmember White?
Present.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Present.
Councilmember Hammond?
Present.
Vice President Niskoski?
Present.
And President McBride is excused. We have eight present.
Thank you. There is no report from the subcommittee on the minutes, and we're going to now go into special business, which we have a special resolution to commemorate Memorial Day. The sponsors of this are Councilwoman Lori Hammond and myself, Sheila Niskoski. Clerk Jones, could you please read Bill number twenty-two dash twenty-five?
Twenty-two, twenty-five. Twenty-two, twenty-five, a special resolution to commemorate Memorial Day.
Okay, thank you. So, since we have people online, instead of doing a vote by acclamation, all those in favor of the resolution, the special resolution? Well, we have to take a... Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, yes, so we'll go ahead and read the resolution first. My apologies.
No, that's fine. So, we'll read through the resolution before us today. It says, whereas the first observance of Memorial Day occurred on May first of eighteen sixty-five in Charleston, South Carolina, and was organized mostly by freed slaves who staged a parade to honor fallen Union soldiers of the American Civil War; and whereas the first national observance of Declaration Day occurred on May thirtieth of eighteen sixty-eight; and whereas, in nineteen fifty, President Harry S Truman proclaimed May thirtieth in nineteen fifty as a day to unite the nations in the universal prayer, and declared each seceding Memorial Day as a day of prayer for permanent peace; and whereas, the United States Congress, by public law, one zero six dash five seven nine, has designated three P M. local time on Memorial Day as a time for all Americans to observe, in their own way, a national moment of remembrance; and whereas, Memorial Day became a federal holiday in nineteen seventy-one, and is now celebrated on the last Monday in May; and whereas, many observe the holiday honoring those who died while serving in the military by visiting cemeteries or memorials, holding family gatherings, participating in parades, and...
And whereas, we must never forget, since that first shots fired in the Revolutionary War, men and women have answered the call of duty around the world, and sacrificed their lives for the principles on which this country is built. And whereas, although words and actions can never be adequate, it is nevertheless the sacred duty of every American, not only to honor those who have fallen, but also to seek permanent peace. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the South Bend Common Council as follows. Section one. The South Bend Common Council remembers and honors all women and men who have lost their lives while serving in all branches of our nation's military, whether in war or in peace. Section two. The South Bend Common Council joins with others throughout the country in a national moment of remembrance. Section three. The South Bend Common Council also joins with others throughout the country who, in their own way, pay, pray for permanent peace. Signed and approved this twenty-third day of May two thousand and twenty-two, in the city of South Bend, the county of Saint Joseph, in the state of Indiana. So, at this time, I would like to go to the common council members, if anybody would like to make any comments on the resolution. Councilman Lee?
I would just like to say thank you to the presenters of this resolution. It's very important that we remember those who have lost their lives serving our country. My family is a big military family, and so thank you for thinking of them and, and just acknowledging the fact that Memorial Day is a very important day, and we want to make sure that our, that people in our community, that are veterans, and their families know that we care. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members wish to make a statement? Councilwoman Hammond?
I would just like to acknowledge that my primary reason for bringing this forth is in remembrance for my father, who served in the Navy during World War Two, and for my brother, who served during Vietnam. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members? Any council members in the virtual?
Yes. This is Councilwoman White. I did have my hand up.
Yep.
Just wanted to thank both of the sponsors for bringing forth this resolution. Anytime that we can take the time to remember, but most importantly, to honor those who have given their lives or earned their time for peace, and the sacrifices that they have made, it's just very, very timely, and I think the two sponsors for bringing this proclamation forward. My father served, and he is buried in the city cemetery right off of Colfax and Wanda. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman White.
Mm-hmm.
And for myself, I would just like to say, thank you for, Councilwoman Hammond, for partnering with me. She brought this forward, into which I was wanting to make some comments as well, so I thank her for allowing us to do this together. But I also want us to remember the families, because for, for our fallen soldiers, men and women, they leave behind families who don't have that seat at the table during the picnics, you know, during the parades, and, you know, they're, they're minus a family member, so I just want us to also remember the families. And for myself, I come from a long line of military, World War Two, Vietnam, Afghanistan, Desert Shield, Desert Storm. So, certainly, that day, for me, is a very special day. So, now, I believe we will entertain a motion for the council members, it should be by acclamation, but at this point, if we could take a roll call vote for those that would like to vote. First, I guess I need to entertain a motion. Yes?
Move for passage?
Second.
It's been moved in second, and Clerk Jones, could you take the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. We're going to move on now to reports from city offices. There are none. So, at this point now, I will entertain a motion to resolve into the committee of the whole.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion on the floor, and it has been seconded to move into the committee of the whole. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll call?
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis? Eight ayes.
All right. The committee of the whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second reading in public hearing. I wish to share with you that the bills that will be given a second reading and a public hearing have been given a first reading and set for committee meeting and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed, and the results of their discussion. If the proposed is an ordinance, ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation shall be untimed. Clerk Jones, will you give Bill nineteen dash twenty-two a second reading?
Yes. Nineteen twenty-two, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at northwest corner of Corby Boulevard and Hickory Road, Councilmanic District Number Four, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair, this came before zoning and annexation this afternoon, and comes to the committee of the whole with a favorable recommendation.
Is there a petition, or present? Yes, she is.
Good evening. Angela Smith, zoning administrator for the city of South Bend, with offices located on the fourteenth floor of this building. Again, if I could please ask for the teams to be brought up, so you can see the presentation. The property is located at the northwest corner of Hickory and Corby. In the nineteen nineties, there was a house, in the early nineteen nineties, there was a house on this property, which was demolished as part of a larger effort by an area plan commission initiated rezoning, where they rezoned the entire west side from Catalpa to Corby, and H P, or P H C, which was professional healthcare, for the development of healthcare-related offices and professional offices. That did start to develop to the north, where there are some medical offices, zoned NC Neighborhood Center. Under the current ordinance, this became NC Neighborhood Center, but what they're proposing here is more in line with suburban multifamily, which is our S-two suburban neighborhood-two district. As I mentioned, the site is currently vacant. It has been so since the house was demolished in the mid-nineteen nineties. What they are proposing is a one-story memory care facility with forty beds, so there'd be twenty beds in each wing, on the north and south, and then they have the associated parking. They, that would have been allowed in the Neighborhood Center district, but it would have forced the building really close to the street, and would have kind of been out of character for the suburban-like area over here. They did provide some renderings of what the facility would look like, or would likely to look like. There are other facilities that are much the style as well. Single-story residential kind of character, appropriate for this setting. The plan commission sends this to the council with a favorable recommendation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I believe Mike Danch is online to speak on behalf of the petitioner.
Yes, I'm here. Okay, go ahead. Mike Danch from Danch-Harner and Associates, sixteen forty-three Commerce Drive here in South Bend, representing the petitioners and the contingent purchaser. And as Angela had mentioned, what we're requesting is actually to downzone the piece of property at the northwest corner of Corby and Hickory, from the NC District, which is the neighborhood center, and allows for a multitude of uses, down to the S-two district for the memory care facility. We had worked with the staff on this to try to come up with what we thought was the appropriate zoning classification for this, and still allowed protection for the adjacent single-family neighborhood of McKinley Terrace. And what you're seeing on the, the site plan is what we are proposing, which is a thirty-seven-thousand-square-foot one-story building, and as Angela had mentioned, it would be a memory care facility, forty rooms. There would be access from Hickory Road on the east, and Corby Boulevard on the south. Under the S-two requirements, what we will be doing is providing a substantial buffer zone between the facility and the single-family to the west of the site. Under the S-two, that would require not only fencing, but also a landscape buffer that you're seeing on the site plan. There would be additional landscaping around the building, as you see on the site plan, and any of the parking that is visible from Hickory Road and/or Corby Boulevard is also screened under the S-two requirements with low shrubs. The additional landscaping along the streetscape would be deciduous trees that you see along both Hickory Road and along Corby Boulevard. The site itself would be connected to city water and city sewer. There's a sanitary sewer line that actually runs along the west side of Hickory Road, and there's a water line that's in Hickory Road that we would be connecting to per the city requirements. The site itself is about three-point-seven-eight acres. The facility would have eight to ten staff members, per shift maximum. That's what they are dealing with. And actually, at the memory care facility, none of the residents drive cars, so mainly what you're seeing for the parking areas is for the staff, for the facility, and for visitors to come and see the residents at, at the facility itself. What, from a drainage standpoint, will certainly meet the city standards. We'll be working with city engineering on that. In this particular case, we all have sandy soils out in that area, so what we'll probably end up doing is using a retention area underneath the parking lots that we have done in similar sites in the city of South Bend. What we would ask for, hopefully, would be the approval from the council for this downzoning. The approximate cost for this facility is in the area of about six to nine million dollars. What the contingent purchasers also had done was, prior to any of the public hearings, they had sent a notice out to the surrounding neighborhood. We use the same list that was used for the rezoning petition. They held a meeting at church on Manchester Drive, just approximately two blocks to the west of the site, to allow any residents to show up, and if they had any questions or concerns about what the project entailed, they, they could ask any questions whatsoever. They had about eight to ten residents show up. None of the residents had any concerns about what the project dealt with. Most of them were just curious about what the rezoning and the project would entail. What we would ask for would be council's favorable approval for this, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
All right. Are there any council members that have any questions? Councilwoman Rachel Thomas Morgan?
Thank you, Chair. Angela or Mr. Danch, would you be able to share, is there a timeline that you can share with us?
I could, i-if we receive approval from council, they would actually like to be under construction within the next couple of months if we received approval.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. We'll also ask our virtual councilwoman tonight if she has any questions.
No, I'm fine. Thank you for asking.
All right. At this time, we'll, we'll, we will go to the public hearing portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill nineteen dash twenty-two?
I don't see anyone from the virtual public that is expressing interest to speak in favor of Bill nineteen twenty-two.
Okay. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition of Bill nineteen twenty-two?
There is no one present wishing to speak in opposition of this bill as well.
All right. At this point, the public hearing for Bill nineteen dash twenty-two is now closed. Councilmembers, anyone who wants to make any statements? I'll just say that, you know, memory care facilities are important. If you deal with anybody who, who is dealing with, with Alzheimer's or any of those things, it can be quite challenging, so to have a facility here that's going to cater to tho-to that individual group is a much-needed, much-needed facility. All right. Since there's no one that's speaking in favor, we're, we're going to get ready to entertain a motion regarding Bill nineteen dash twenty-two.
I move we send this to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I second.
There's a motion and a second. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White? Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
All right. Bill nineteen dash twenty-two will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to rise from the committee of the whole and report back to the full council.
So moved.
It has been moved in second. I think we can... Okay. Clerk Jones, call the roll.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
All right. Motion carries.
Thank you. The regular meeting is now reconvened, and we're going to move to the bills on third reading. This is the portion of our meeting where bills are given a third reading, and action is taken regarding bills that were heard during the committee of the whole. Clerk Jones, will you give Bill nineteen twenty-two a third reading?
Yes. Nineteen twenty-two, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at the northwest corner of Corby Boulevard and Hickory Road, Councilmanic District Number Four, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. Councilman Lee, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole?
Yes, this was heard in the committee of the whole, and it comes to the whole council with a favorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you. I'll now entertain a motion regarding Bill nineteen twenty-two.
Move for passage?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for passage. Clerk Jones, could you call the roll?
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Bill nineteen dash twenty-two has passed. We're now going to read, move on to our resolutions. This is the portion of the council meeting where the common council hears bills filed as proposed resolutions. The title of each proposed resolution is read by the city clerk, a report from the committee chairperson of the standing committee to which the bill is referred to, for an advisory review, and recommendation is then given. So, Clerk Jones, could you please give Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-one a reading?
Twenty-two, twenty-one, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as intersection Dillon Drive and Adams Road, South Bend, Indiana, four-six-six-two-eight, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a seven-year real property tax abatement for G L C Portage Prairie B L L C.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Tomas Morgan, is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair. Community Investment Committee met this afternoon and sends Bill twenty-two dash twenty-one to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you so much. And is there a presenter, petitioner? Please state your name, for the record, and address.
Good evening, councilmembers. Caleb Bauer, acting executive director of the Department of Community Investment, with offices on the fourteenth floor of this building. Before you today is... Excuse me, is, is a proposal for a real property tax abatement at the intersection of Dillon Drive and Adams Road. This is the Portage Prairie area where, over the last ten years, we've seen significant expansion in distribution and logistics facilities, and, and you could see in this photo just four that have been built in the last few years by Great Lakes Capital, the company that's coming before you with this abatement request. The proposed project would be a fifteen-point-three-million-dollar investment, and it would be a spec warehouse building, just shy of three hundred thousand square feet, and would generate between fifty and two hundred indirect jobs. The current property tax on this site is one thousand five hundred dollars per year, and we would estimate a net increase of six hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars over the course of the abatement, with the property paying three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars per year in property taxes upon completion of the abatement. Previously, a number of G L C spec projects have come before you, and I just want to run through some of the job amounts at those existing sites. You can see Spec Three, which is the location of C T D I, has three hundred and thirteen jobs. Additionally, a hundred and ninety-seven jobs at Spec Two, and, and in total, six hundred jobs between the four existing warehouse facilities. And here is a south-facing photo of the area. FedEx is in the area, and Amazon Warehouse is also in the area, and the Portage Prairie Five site is denoted in red here, just south of the Indiana-Michigan border. The total value of the taxes abated would be one-point-eight million dollars, and this would be a seven-year abatement. And Jeff Smoke from Great Lakes Capital has joined me here, and Jeff, do you want to add anything?
Good evening. Jeff Smoke, Great Lakes Capital, one-one-two West Jefferson. Thank you all for your time tonight. Caleb and his team did a great job putting this together, and I don't have anything substantial to add. We're just continuing the success out there. Appreciate your support.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. At this point, we're going to move to the council for questions. Is there any council members? Councilwoman Hammond?
Thank you. So, my first question, I think, is for Caleb. Based on the conversation during the committee meeting, I am getting the impression that the petition for incentives, the point system sheet that is used as kind of a general form is not really adequate when we are looking at a spec building?
Well, I, the point system is still utilized to determine the length of the abatement, so depending on the score on the application is how long the abatement can, can be made. So, that's why, in this case, we have a seven-year abatement.
Because the score is... Because the score is below fifty percent of the total possible points on the-the scoring?
The score is two-sixty-two out of five-hundred-and-thirty-nine possible points.
And the next page that says four-seventy-two out of a thousand?
Correct, yes.
Less than fifty?
That would be the score.
Yeah. So what I'm wondering is, and I appreciate the petitioner coming forward and being willing to build in South Bend, and we want lots of that, but for community investment, I'm thinking that we need a different tool. This does not seem to be an adequate tool to assess this type of building, a spec building that does not have a tenant lined up, where we are guessing on a number of workers, anywhere from thirty to three-hundred jobs being possibly created. That leaves us with not very much information, really, to make our assessment on an abatement.
I think the estimate was fifty to two-hundred jobs, and-and that's why we've included the job counts from the previous spec buildings. Obviously, when a building is being built without a tenant, it's hard to commit to a specific job number, but we felt like the track record of GLC's previous projects is definitely a contributing factor in our decision to bring this before you.
But it's still unsure. You don't know-it-you're speculating on that as well, the number of jobs.
Right, there's no tenant-
Exactly.
-lined up for the building.
So my question is, perhaps we could look at a form that better fits this type of abatement? Maybe there's a different type of tax break a building like this could get?
Well, I think in this case, th-the form did determine that the abatement could be seven years, so tha-that's the duration of the abatement. But we can certainly work with you to think about if there's a way to add categories for spec buildings onto the abatement application form?
I think that would be advised. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other councilmembers that have questions directly related to Bill num-or the Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-one?
I just-
Councilwoman Lee?
I just, for-for the record again, right now, what the city is getting for that property in property taxes is fifteen-hundred dollars, correct?
Yes.
And once this is done, th-they'll be getting at least three-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand dollars a year?
Correct.
Okay. So we're going from fifteen-hundred dollars in taxes to three-hundred-and-and-and eighty-six-thousand. That-that is a great use of land for-for the city, and-and a great opportunity. And, so yeah. And then, it'll end up being six-hundred jobs, correct? Or-or in that areas already? This will be additional fifty to two-hundred extra jobs?
Yes.
Okay. Yes. Okay. I just want to make it clear, so that people will understand that this is-this is a substantial increase in what the city will receive from actually passing this.
Okay, Councilwoman Tomas Morgan?
Yes, thank you Chair. Mr. Bauer, Mr. Smokes, is it? Excuse me. I know that we don't have a-a tenant currently, but can you confirm that you've been in conversation with prospective tenants?
Yes. Great question. We're actually in conversations right now with a tenant out of the air-in-state, but out of the local area for about two-hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet. I don't have the exact number of jobs they would bring, but we are in serious conversations with them, so.
Thank you.
Councilman Wax?
Thank you. Mr. Smokes, can you talk about a little bit how getting or not getting an abatement factors into your assessment into feasibility of a project like this?
Yeah, it's critical. I mean, the tenants are out there searching for total cost in a project and their lease rate, and so when they look at the rent and paying taxes, if taxes are, you know, twenty percent of the rent, that's a big deal, and if there's a place where it does not have an abatement or does have an abatement, they're not going to come to the place that doesn't have an abatement.
So, o-obviously, it's always difficult to identify a negative, but i-in your understanding of the business climate, if-if an abatement wouldn't exist, your likelihood of being able to-for this to be a successful project, i-is there a significant chance that it would be successful without an abatement? Or is an abatement critical to the success of the project?
It's critical. It wouldn't move forward without an abatement. We build spec all over the Midwest, and there's not one that we do that doesn't have an abatement.
So if an abatement wouldn't be approved by us, the tenants would be looking elsewhere for-
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other councilmembers that have questions?
Could I get clarity on something that was said?
Okay, you've already asked more than two questions, so is it-
Well, it wasn't sent prior to just now.
Let me see if there's any other couns- I would like to see if there's any councilmembers that have questions first. Councilwoman White, you're online. Do you have any questions?
No, I do not, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and Councilwoman Hammond, now you would like to have clarity?
Thank you. You had mentioned the impact of the tax abatement on the tenant. Is the cost of the property tax passed on to the tenant?
Yes, typically in industrial deals, it's called triple-net, so all-all of the operating expenses are passed on through the tenant as part of their rent.
Thank you.
Okay, councilmembers, and if there's no other questions, I'm going to move on to the public portion. During the public portion, on each proposed resolution, members of the public are invited to address the council. We ask that you please give your name, address, and comments on the bill. If you have any questions, they will be addressed by the presenter during their rebuttal. Each member of the public is limited to five minutes, with those speaking in favor going first, followed by those in opposition, then a five-minute rebuttal for the presenter of the bill. So is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of Bill twenty-two dash twenty-one?
I don't see anyone from the virtual public that is wishing to speak in favor of Resolution twenty-two twenty-one.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone here wishing to speak against? Sir, if you could approach the podium and state your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, my name is Joseph Shabazz. I live at three-sixteen Martin Luther King Drive in South Bend, four-six-six-zero-one. It's not so much as being in opposition, but another question. I assume these buildings already exist, or they're proposed to be built? Proposed, huh? So, I wonder how come nobody asks how many construction jobs would be created by this stuff? And were they going to try to attempt to achieve racial parity in the construction?
Okay, Mr. Bauer, would you like to rebut with the- to follow up with that question? If that's appropriate?
Yes, as part of the tax abatement application, there is a line to maintain an affirmative action plan. In this case, they-they-they said that they do maintain an affirmative action plan. And so, tha-that is part of the application, and-and a consideration that's made as far as the scoring total.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak against Bill twenty-two dash twenty-one? Attorney Palmer, if he would like to approach for another question, is that- is he allowed to do that if he's already- Sir, if you would like to approach, if you have a secondary question, now you can ask your second question.
The reason why I ask my question because the-the tax abatement, the application for incentive, is rather vague, unless they talk about how many employees they had that were minorities before the project, and how many were minorities? Was that part of the incentive application complete?
I will let the- Mr. Bauer, would you like to-
I'm sure it's there.
Okay, but that's for the-
Okay.
The petitioner or the presenter to answer, if you would like to.
The abatement form does include a section to list the number of full-time and part-time minority and/or female employees for each of the last three years. In this case, it was not filled out because this is a speculative building whereby the tenant is not the-the applicant, Great Lakes Capital.
So in other words, this is a spec building, so there's no employees to actually fill in to say how many of them are currently working at this time?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, is there any- Okay, well, we're going-we're in the public portion hearing of this meeting right now. So right now, I'm going to ask if there's anybody else here that wishes to speak against this bill? I don't see anyone online. Do you see anyone online, Clerk Jones, to double-check myself?
No, there's no one in the virtual audience that is wishing to speak in opposition of this bill.
Okay, thank you. Then at this point, we're going to close the public portion, and we're going to come back to our councilmembers. Are there any comments from the councilmembers? Councilman Davis?
Thank you. I-I want to be frank in what I'm going to say. I-I think everybody made their point about whether this building would bring in tax revenue, jobs, et cetera. I think that that goes without saying. I think Lori has a very good point. I think Mr. Joseph Shabazz has a good point. We are a-a body that develops policy, and once a policy is passed through, we expect that we do our work by the past policy, whatever the passage is. And so, when things become vague, when these things show up as a way of-of being unattenable, or-or in some ways suggests that there's some ambiguity that exists there, this council is charged with the uh-with-with responsibility to get those things corrected. It's not about whether they're going to bring in a hundred jobs, two-thousand jobs, or whatever that number is. It's not that they're going to pay taxes, or they're going to, or they're not going to pay taxes. That-that's not the point. The point is, is that our job requires us to make sure the policy is being followed. And if we are against following the policy that we have pushed through, we're not doing our job. As a matter of fact, we're failing at it. As a matter of fact, we are against the oath that we took-we took when we first came into office. So I really hate that the discussions continue to go at, well, guess what, what we're getting? That-that has absolutely nothing to do with the point. The point is, is that there's a policy that's there, and it says these things. And if we cannot- if we don't desire to follow our own policy, how can we expect the community to do the same thing?
Okay, is there any other? Thank you for your comments. Is there any other councilmembers that has a comment? Councilman Wax?
Thank you. I just want to express my appreciation to the petitioner for their ongoing and continued investment in South Bend. Indiana is a booming economic market, and there's a lot of places to invest in, and I appreciate the investments that are made locally, so thank you.
Councilman Hammond? Or Councilwoman Hammond, excuse me?
Thank you. Mr. Bauer, I just want to point out on public benefit item number three-C, which is under workforce-related items, there's a commitment being made to maintain a firm-affirmative action plan for a tenant we have not identified yet. How will that be upheld and enforced?
So the section, that page is-is for the construction contractor that would build the building? And it's-at the top, it says, information required on both the construction companies and the companies which will provide materials purchased for this project. And so, the construction company and the material suppliers would have committed to maintaining an affirmative action plan.
So the forty-two jobs, those are construction jobs?
I believe so. Jeff? Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other councilmembers that would like to make a comment? Councilman Warner?
Yeah, I-I agree, there is an ordinance in place. There's a policy in place. According to that ordinance, they are-have a points for seven-year abatement, and I'm very happy to support that seven-year abatement, and-and thank you for your continued investment out there. That area has become a labor hub of this city, and I'm excited to see it continue to grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Lee?
I would just like to also say that as when we look at jobs and look at opportunities for the city to expand, we look at places like Elkhart and see how they're booming. And many times, people ask, how is Elkhart have so many high-paying jobs? We-we have to do the things that are important for us to be able to attract businesses to this area, to South Bend. And for me, I-I look at a- right now, the city is only getting fifteen-hundred dollars for property taxes, and we're going to be getting three-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand dollars in property taxes. And so, again, we-we have to encourage people to want to invest in our city and-and bring those jobs, so that we can help our citizens to be able to get better-paying jobs, to be able to take care of their families, and to be able to-to-to live and thrive here in South Bend. So I just want to say thank you.
Councilwoman Tomas Morgan?
Thank you Chair. I just want to clarify that the number forty-two under three-A, I think that was referenced to, are points, not number of jobs. But I just want to add to the gratitude that other councilmembers had had put forth, and thank you for your continued investment in South Bend. I-I want to say, South Bend is open for business, and-and thank you for being here, and thank you for your continued investment.
Thank you. Councilwoman White? Do you have anything? You can just shake your head no if you would like.
No, I'm just, you know, I think the conversation is a good conversation. I thank the developer for their continued investment in this area, and I wish them the very best as we move forward. So thank you again.
Thank you. And I would like to also just reverberate that thank you for your continued investment in the city of South Bend. As Councilman Warner pointed out, that's a hub right now, and thank you for the investment that you have made into into our city. So at this point, is there a motion regarding Bill twenty-two dash twenty-one?
Move for adoption.
It has been moved and seconded for adoption. Clerk Jones, could you call the roll, please?
Yes. Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Bill twenty-two dash tw- or Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-one has been adopted. Thank you, gentlemen. Next, we have Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-three. Clerk Jones, could you please read the title of the resolution?
Yes. Twenty-two twenty-three, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, confirming the grant of certain personal property tax abatement deductions and waiving non-compliance for property commonly known as thirty-seven-twenty-two Foundation Court, South Bend, Indiana, four-six-six-two-eight, for Imagineering Enterprises, Inc.
Thank you. Councilwoman Tomas Morgan, is there a committee report?
Yes, Community Investment Committee met this afternoon and sends Bill Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-three to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a presenter. Your name and address, please.
Good evening, councilmembers. Caleb Bauer, Acting Executive Director of the Department of Community Investment with offices on the 14th floor of this building. Bringing before you today, start with the first of two waivers of noncompliance for Imaginereering Finishing Technologies. The first is a personal property tax abatement, and the company submitted a letter, which you'll see in your packet, explaining the situation involving a number of staff members turning over, whereby they unfortunately missed the deadline for their Form 322 to be filed. However, if we're able to pull up the presentation on the screen, the company has been on track with their investments and has already made $2.3 million in investment in their facility, $413,000 in equipment, and $1.8 million as part of a building expansion, and they have already met the job commitments as a part of both abatements. And so Mike Seiler from Imaginereering has joined me here. And Mike, if you have anything you want to add?
Michael Seiler, 3722 Foundation Court, CFO of Imaginereering Enterprises. I don't have anything substantial to add. I would like to apologize for my error and omission in this one for taking up the council's time. However, I do really appreciate what the city of South Bend and this council in particular does for small businesses like ours in allowing us to grow in the community, so thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. Then at this, are you finished, Caleb?
Yes.
Okay. So at this point, we're going to come back then to the council for questions. Is there any questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move then to the public portion. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of Resolution 22-23?
There is no one in the virtual audience that is expressing interest in speaking in favor of 22-23.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak against Bill 22-23?
There is no one in the virtual audience that is expressing interest to speak against Bill 22-23.
Okay, thank you. The public hearing on this is now closed then. We're going to come back to the council. Are there any comments from the council members? If not, is there a motion regarding Bill 22-23?
I'd like to move for passage.
Second.
It has been moved and duly seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Eight ayes. Thank you. 22-23 has been adopted. We're going to move on to our next resolution, which is Resolution 22-24. Clerk Jones, could you please read the title of the resolution?
Yes. 22-24, A Resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana Confirming the Grant of Certain Real Property Tax Abatement Deductions and Waiving Noncompliance for Property Commonly Known as 3722 Foundation Court, South Bend, Indiana, 46628, for Imaginereering Enterprises, Inc.
Thank you. Councilwoman Tomas Morgan, is there a committee report?
Yes, Community Investment Committee sends 22-24 to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Is there a presenter, present?
Caleb Bauer, Acting Executive Director of the Department of Community Investment with offices on the 14th floor of this building. This is the second waiver of noncompliance for Imaginereering. This is for the real property abatement.
And does the petitioner have anything he would like to add?
I don't have anything further to add. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll come back then to the council. Are there any questions from the council? Then we're going to move on to the public portion. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the Resolution Bill 22-24?
There is no one from the virtual public that is wishing to speak in favor of 22-24.
Is there anyone wishing to speak against?
There is no one wishing to speak against as well.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. We're going to come back, we're going to close the public meeting on Bill 22-24, come back to the council. Are there any comments from council members at this point? If not, is there a motion regarding the bill?
Move for adoption.
Second.
It has been moved and duly seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll? Vice President Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Eight ayes. Thank you. Bill 22-24 has been adopted. At this point, we are going to move on to our bills that are on first reading. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 21-22 a first reading?
21-22, First Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Amending the Zoning Ordinance for Property Located at 1102, 1106, 1110, 1114, 1118, 1122, 1126, and 1130 McCartney Street, Councilmanic District Number One in the City of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. I'd like to entertain a motion to send Bill 21-22 to the South Bend Plan Commission for Public Hearing on June 21st, and the ZNA Committee and Council for Public Hearing in Third Reading on June 27th.
So move.
So move.
Second.
It's been duly moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll? Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski?
Aye.
Eight ayes. Thank you. We're going to move into the unfinished business portion of our meeting, and at this point, I would like to turn it over to our attorney, Bob Palmer, for some comments.
Thank you, Vice President Niskowski. As parliamentarian, I was asked to look at the topics of unfinished business and new business that exist on our agenda for all meetings, to give an opinion as to what is included in those two agenda items. My opinion as parliamentarian is that unfinished business means an agenda item to consider or discuss specific items carried over from prior common council meetings that were in the process of being considered when the last regular council meeting was adjourned, or which were scheduled to be considered at the last regular council meeting but were not reached before the adjournment of that meeting. And then my opinion regarding new business is that new business means an agenda item for common council members serving as representatives on other committees, commissions, boards, et cetera, to provide verbal updates on meetings which they have attended since the prior regular council meeting. Council members may also announce upcoming events, meetings, or programs of interest to the public.
Thank you, Attorney Palmer. I appreciate your comments.
I have a question.
At this point, we're going to turn to the unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business?
Well, yeah, but I want to respond to what Attorney Palmer just gave us. Is there any way that you can put that in writing for us?
Yes.
Your opinion?
Yes.
Yeah. So your opinion does not dictate the order of business? It's just an opinion, am I correct?
Correct. My opinion as a parliamentarian can be either accepted or rejected by the acting president.
Acting, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
As by the president, or in this case, the vice president.
Why was that called a question? Unfinished?
I was just asked by council leadership, council officers, to give an opinion as to what's included in those topics.
I actually asked for clarification.
Why?
But it's been a number of times that you have asked for clarity on, on business.
Yeah, but I'm asking you why you asked for clarity, not why I'm at, why I asked for things in the past. I'm asking you.
Well, because there has been more than one person that has asked me what does unfinished business mean and new business mean. So I asked for Attorney Palmer to give clarification so that we know, under the right circumstances, that you are able to speak under unfinished business and new business. And I accept Mr. Palmer's opinion. I value Mr. Palmer's opinion. I'm sure he's researched it adequately. So if there is any unfinished business at this time...
No, well, I'm not done with that, though. That's not, I'm not done with that conversation.
Okay, well, if...
You're not allowed to, like, cut another council member off like that either. What I'm interested in finding out, and I, we're walking a really fine line when we're trying to curtail and to define what another council member is allowed to say, when they're allowed to say it, when they're not allowed to say, et cetera. I have really, really strong opinion about that because the more that this council continues to rule under the same leadership, I see more and more, or in the idea of checks and balances on who should say what, when they should say it, how they should say it, and when they're allowed to say it. Like I said, I've been serving for a while, and I've never seen or experienced or even been in a part of such a body that is interested in making sure council members are being put into these different lanes, and they have to do these things this way, or they have to do it that way. And then if they don't do it, then they can't do it at all. And I think that that just flies in the face of our democracy, especially our representative democracy. It's U.S. Constitution-based. We go back to the building and to start on this country, it had everything to do with freedom of speech. And the more and more we have meetings, the more and more I hear how we shouldn't say this, or we shouldn't say that, when we should say it, and how we should say it. That's why I asked for the opinion to be documented, and also making sure that it's an opinion, because I just keep continuing to hear council members are not allowed to say this or say that. And I think, again, it flies in the face of our representative democracy. It flies in the face of everything that we are supposed to be doing here. I think we're adults, and I think that we have enough to, you know, say, you know, our piece without hurting other people's feelings, but, and it happens, and so what? But that's the job.
Well, are you finished, Councilman Davis?
Yeah, with that piece, I do have unfinished business.
Then I would like to respond to what you just said.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm, this was not directed at anyone in particular. This was something that has been asked to be addressed more than one time from more than one council member. And the way that I look at this is a procedure. We follow a very strict procedure, the way that we hear bills, the way that we hear resolutions, the way that we hear, you know, a number of items that come before us. And there's a procedure for every single thing that is heard before us. So please don't take it that this was directed or trying to stifle anybody's free speech. This was meant to be able to have clarity so that we know procedurally that we are following things procedurally. This isn't meant to stifle anybody. So council members, if you think that was the intent of that, it is not. It is really for clarification purposes, only to make sure that we are following the proper procedures of having a good council meeting.
Sure, but you're, but you're creating a culture...
And I appreciate, excuse me, I was talking. And as far as anybody feeling that way, you could certainly talk to me after the meeting, and we could have a conversation about it, but I don't think that...
That's what I'm saying. You're telling me I have to talk to you after the meeting? I can't talk to you right now? That's the same thing I was just talking about.
Okay, so we're, this...
But that's the same thing I was just talking about. You just proved what I was saying.
No, Councilman Davis, this is very inappropriate.
Now you're telling me it's inappropriate? I don't know what appropriateness is or inappropriateness is.
Yes, if you felt that I've hurt your feelings, we can certainly have a conversation after the meeting.
You have not hurt my feelings, I am paying attention to what you are doing.
I'd like to call a point of order.
What, what does that mean?
Okay.
I'm supposed to start talking because you said point of order?
Right now, we are going...
That does not mean that.
Okay.
Who told you that?
You asked me to explain. I told you, I explained this. It's procedure. It's not meant to stifle anybody. I really don't want to have an argument here on the floor.
No one's arguing.
So I did answer your question.
So because I have a question, is there argument?
Okay, so if you would like to speak under unfinished business...
I will.
Okay, then please speak, Mr. Councilman Davis.
But before going further, Bob, we're going to need this stuff in writing, right? So if we're going to be doing things procedurally, correct, then we need to make sure that all of this stuff is in writing so each council member knows what they can and can't say, or what is supposed to be done during each portion of the council meeting.
It will be.
I appreciate that, because just stating it is just stating it. So I think written word makes a lot of sense. Thank you, sir. When is redistricting supposed to take off? We're, like, headed to the mid-part of this year, and I know it's supposed to happen this year. So that's a question.
Correct. Redistricting will have to occur before the end of this year.
That's a long window. So who, that's a long window. Who organizes the discussion?
There's a subcommittee on redistricting that is appointed by the president.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else with unfinished business? If not, we're going to move on to new business? Is there anybody with any new business? Councilman Davis?
Yes, I'm going to ask that whatever chair that presides over the Human Resources Department, maybe we need to have a discussion. I got a phone call last week, and I got another phone call today about the amount of workers that are not in certain places that's causing us some harm with getting simple city services taken care of. And I think that we're headed towards, you know, I think we're already having a problem, we're experiencing a problem. So I'm not sure who that is, who holds that chair, in particular for the Human Resources Department, but we have a problem, and I won't air out the problem right now, but I would rather, you know, talk to whomever I need to speak with so that we can go ahead and perhaps schedule a meeting, because we're having a problem. So who was that? Who holds that chair?
I think we have an acting department chair right now for HR.
No, the committee chair.
Personnel and finance.
Okay, who was that? That's sheba?
Or that would be, they're under, it wouldn't be under Community Investment.
Personnel and finance.
Yeah, that would be Personnel and Finance.
That would be you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, I will email you, I'll give you a call and let you know what I'm getting. But I most certainly know that we're having a problem.
Okay. And you're requesting a committee meeting?
I'm sorry.
I said, and you are requesting a committee meeting?
If you feel like it's valuable, sure, but I'm going to share with you what I do know, and then, yeah, I think a committee hearing would probably be apropos for this issue.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Hammond?
Thank you. In the First and Second District on Thursday at 6:00, Councilman Davis, myself, and I've been invited, Councilman Lee, to a neighborhood and safety meeting. We have the nuisance officer, Officer Burns, coming to speak about Neighborhood Watch Program. And that is an area, as we have many areas in the city, that are not yet part of an association, a neighborhood association. So my goal is to work throughout the city and find those pockets. The Neighborhood Watch Program is to assist with some of the safety concerns within the neighborhoods to help people to feel a little more safe in their homes and in their neighborhoods. So I would welcome anyone on the council to join me in that.
Are there members that have any new business to come before the committee? And I believe there's a residential neighborhoods meeting that same evening, Lori, so there'll be a number of us probably that won't be able to, to be there.
That's where I was referencing that one, but to go as we go, find those areas throughout the city.
Gotcha. Councilman Lee?
I just would, under new business, just, just want everybody to continue to think about our city as we are embarking to try to engage individuals that may be involved in gang and gun activity. We've had some tragedies happen in the last few weeks, and so the questions have been, what is the council going to do about the violence in our city? And so I just wanted to, to just let the council members know that we are working on some ideals to help engage individuals and help to deal with the violence in our city, and definitely want people to keep... And definitely want people to keep the family of a young lady that was killed at the Grille, want to keep them lifted up in prayers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair?
Anybody else have any new business?
I want to ask a question about the violence, and what is, what is it that you want done? It was not so clear. I get that people need to unify, people need to fight against it, whatever that is. But what are the steps that are being created in order to address it?
Well, I think one of the things is that everybody's got to look at violence in our city, and not just in a certain area, because it can happen anywhere. So all I was saying is that we need to be thinking about ways of engaging our community to have these conversations so that we can get different perspectives on how to address this violence in our community, and what's driving the violence. And so I was just asking for the council to be, to think about that and to keep the families that have been in this recent violence in their prayers, so.
So you don't really have like, an agenda that has been put together to address these things?
Well, every day, we're dealing with the violence that happens in our city with group violence intervention. And there's things that's being proposed, like the Project Greenlight, that will also help. So, again, my statement was just for the council members to think about, to remember the families that have been affected by violence, so.
So do, is there any way possible that we can get an update on what's happening? Like, what Project Greenlight, because we don't, I don't know what that is. And so I'll be interested.
I think that would be under, health and public safety.
So Councilman Wax could probably, if you would like to email him your request, I'm sure that he could get that on the agenda.
Who may email my request to him, is what you just asked?
I believe that's what you just asked for.
No, I was making sure, you said, me, I have to email him, is what you just asked me to do?
Well, usually an email is a good way so you don't forget.
You have to, is this yes or no?
I can answer however I would like.
Well, sure, but I'm unclear, you're asking me to email him?
Councilman Wax?
What, I'm being serious.
Would you consider having an update in your committee? Thank you so much.
Thank you, that's what I was getting at.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. I appreciate, I appreciate it.
We're cooking with grease now.
All right, wonderful. Okay, if there is no new business, I see Ms. Karen White, doesn't look like you have anything under new business, okay. So at this time, we're going to move to the privilege of the floor. And I would like to read a statement before we move to the privilege of the floor, and that is disrespectful, rude speech or actions will not be tolerated. Such speech and/or actions, as well as verbal attacks on any person may result in the individual, without notice, forfeiting the remainder of his or her allotted time. Individuals who wish to address the council must state their name and address. Individuals will be limited to three minutes. The maximum time limit for this portion of the meeting shall be 30 minutes. Individuals shall not be permitted to address topics which the council has heard previously on the agenda. The council president may assign a topic raised by any, by an individual during the privilege of the floor to the appropriate council member and/or request the city clerk to contact a member of the city administration for review. And topics assigned shall be responded to at the next scheduled council meeting. Is there anyone here that would wish to speak under privilege of the floor? Yes, sir, if you could please approach and give your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is Joseph Shabazz. I live 316 Martin Luther King Boulevard, South Bend, Indiana. I'm sure the council is aware that we now have this real big, pretty public library, St. Joseph County Public Library. So we have at a cost of $40 million. In fact, the city floated a $4 million loan to accomplish, to help accomplish that thing. However, when we looked at the employment records for the contractors, there were no minority contractors. There was only one female contractor. I contacted the library, they said, well, who exactly did do the work? And they sent me a list of the people who actually did the work. But when I started asking them, what good faith efforts did you make to encourage minority and women involvement, they suddenly went moot, they won't talk to me anymore. And that goes back to some of that stuff we were talking about with that tax abatement. Everybody knows that the ordinance, the tax abatement ordinance, it says that if you submit an incomplete application, it's supposed to be rejected out of hand. But people keep sending them. It seems like there's somebody around here has an issue with the rule of law. Do we respect the law and that this body puts together? Do, how come the Office of Diversity and Inclusion didn't include some language in that confirming resolution that you guys put together saying that the provisions of Section 14.5 of the Municipal Code is attached to this document, and we expect it to be done? The library is a municipal corporation. That's the reason why when you go to St. Joseph County, they say, oh, we had nothing to do with it. You guys submitted the money, do other people tell you what they willing to do for your money? Or do you tell them what they have to do for your money? Actually, our money. So I'm hoping that maybe somebody here, the clerk, council, somebody can encourage somebody from the trustees of the public library to tell us what kind of good faith efforts they did to encourage minority and women involvement in the construction process. Because the district don't look like they did anything. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on privilege of the floor? Clerk Jones?
Thank you. Dawn Jones, City Clerk, offices on the fourth floor of the County City Building. And the purpose in me speaking is because the city council, a few weeks ago, did a resolution, a special resolution regarding the Mental Health Awareness Month. And I really appreciate that resolution. It brought awareness to the, it brings awareness to the community. And the reason why I'm speaking at this point is because we are talking about violence. And it's hard, you can't talk about violence without talking about mental health and mental health awareness. And so, and some of the things that we want to do about it, like Councilman Davis asked about, what are some resolutions or solutions? We have to look at mental health. You know, there are so many instances that produce poor mental health that we may not be aware of. And I know poverty is one. I know postpartum is another. The pandemic is one. And one of the things that came up in my conversation with, with professional psychiatrists and professional psychologists is that perhaps there's a way that we can create crisis teams that address mental health, mental health. We have crisis teams that address violence. We have crisis teams that address, you know, so many different things. But there are so many people in this community that need help because of things that have happened to them beyond their circumstances, beyond their control. So I'm just saying that, I'm just throwing that out there in my little three minutes to mention that to the council, as well as to the public, that we really need to take, and I know that we are, but we really need to put our resources and anything that we can into mental health. Because people are suffering, and people are hurting, and they don't know how to get out of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? And approve to the floor?
Sheila?
Yes, Councilman Davis?
I think Mrs. Joseph Shabazz really has a point. And I don't know how this is going to take off after we leave here. But I think that that...
Are you speaking under privilege of the floor?
Oh, I can absolutely do that if I need to. I didn't know I had to. Henry Davis Jr., 5117, Idaho Drive, South Bend, Indiana, 46619. I think Mrs. Shabazz has a really good point. He's gone out of here now. But this has been an age-old conversation. 2011 or '12, I and my three other members co-sponsored a resolution that ended up ultimately becoming what we, not resolution, an ordinance that ultimately ended up becoming what we do look at as the, excuse me, the Diversity Board and also the office. Those things were recreated back in 2011 or '12, but over time, things have been revised, right? So what he's saying, there is no numbers that will suggest any minority participation. It will suggest that no one's enforcing the law. It will suggest so many other things, but at the end of the day, nothing is happening. I think it would be healthy for us to get into the weeds and the details of it, to see if those things are happening. If they're not happening, why are they not happening? This is a part of the conversation of violence. When money is not going back into an area that it deserves to be back into, when people are not working, when tax base is not being expanded in areas, then you can guarantee violence is going to occur in those areas. So that was a way of us going all the way back to 2011 or '12, every year that was, to add something that will help support the development, economic and socially development of the black community and the brown community, and women community as well. So I think that it would be apropos, I think it would be supportive if we would have a discussion through a committee structure on that particular topic. Because he's not, what he told us was the truth. And if we look at the numbers, we'll probably be frightened.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak under privilege of the floor? Seeing none, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned.